All right, I call it order, the Public Works Meeting for October 6th is 6:02. Meeting is Carol King and Mr. Ryan Reynolds. Meeting in order, first we start with any public comment. Public Works. All right, comments, reports, or yeah, sorry, reading approval of minutes.
Make a motion that be approved as submitted.
Second.
Getting by one over. A motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, eyes have it. All right. Next, Ms. Fleeman.
There you go. Yes, we're gonna think, thank you, Mr. Chairman, many members. Pretty brief, the IMS survey for the road survey that we included in the budget this year, they've concluded, they they drove the roads in September. They released the information, draft version of the information to Seth and I on Friday. We started going through the data as we move forward, probably next month, a month after, I'll bring it before, show you guys everything and where we stand for the road scores and road paving next few years. Aside from that, last week, if you didn't see the administrative report, we poured a new concrete pad behind the stage, installed drainage to prevent any water from hitting on the stage and painted the posts. If you remember art, like an artistic rendering of of the stage when we were going through the RFQ process, it had a horizontal sled wooden like fence design with black posts behind. It was removed as we were, you know, budgetary reasons, well, we we are reconstructing it. We have purchased all of the the horizontal slats, but you may know that, you know, the lumber was very wet, so it's drying at Public Works, it's pressure treated and we've got about half of it stained in the next week or so, we should have it, we should have it up and completed.
Just doing PT pine or?
Yes, yeah, we went with the decking boards because they're thicker. But you know, they're 16 feet long and it's hard to find. It's just not like it used to be.
I used that to fence after the armed hit last year. Very happy with. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Right. No unfinished, unfinished business, City Hall renovations.
All right, what you have before you is a request to approve, send through council, a budget for the City Hall renovations. If you remember during the August City Council meeting, you guys went ahead and approved funding for City Hall improvements as part of the 2024-2025 fiscal year surplus projection and recommended expenditure plan. These funds obviously came from our conservative estimates being a little bit off and we need to reappropriate the funds. The funds themselves were recommended to be building interior renovations as well as a full facility generator. Included in the presentation is a breakdown of all of the renovations that we intend to include. We learned during Hurricane Helene that while we do have a generator for the facility, it doesn't run everything. 911 was was kept afloat in portions of the of the building, but as for emergency management purposes being this, this being the command center, the whole facility needs to be powered. So the proposal is to get to replace the generator, which is original to this facility and upsize it for any potential expansions of this facility. In addition to that, we want to repaint, repaint everything downstairs, the stairwell, the PD. We want to install electronic locks, if you are unaware, there are doors that separate the PD section from the rest of this building. This building vacates at 5:00, PD is open 24/7. If you're working after hours, there's, it's a safety concern. In addition to that, we want to upgrade the facility to have ADA compliant doors, like I said, PD is open 24/7, and if you wanted to have access to that back door, we wanted to have push button, push button entrances similar to what we have installed at the senior center. And last but not least, is to say goodbye to this wonderful carpet to do something a little bit nicer in here. We did, we did include a contingency and the renovations themselves come in with my projection, hopefully working out to the projected amount of $250,000. I recommend that you approve this. But that's merely my recommendation, it's up to you guys.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve $250,000 for City Hall improvements as submitted.
Me too, send a full council for.
Yes, please, what did I say? Yeah, approve it and send it to City, City Council.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions. I have two questions. The electronic door locks or those, those doors by there going into the parking lot or those two doors or out here?
These two doors right here that separate.
These, okay.
Yeah, when you walk out of here, yes.
That one, okay, all right. And then my other question is on, I mean, 100%, make this nicer, we're able to get some new chairs a few years back, but did y'all solely look at the price of carpet or did you consider maybe doing like a hardwood laminate or no? Just curious, I know one's probably more expensive than the other, but I was just curious.
You looked at carpet, I, I, my estimate was very conservative, there is.
I know.
There, there is some money to hopefully, I believe there's gonna be money, so if we, as we move along, the generators are the first and some of the other things I do believe will come in under budget. We have the potential, and if the discretion is there for the city administrator to to go with some other flooring material, I think that could, we could make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, just a suggestion, I think it might be worth looking at as high traffic as this area is, and it's easier to clean and maintain, just, just a thought. As he looks down.
No, no, I agree, I.
At the carpet, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And it may not be feasible, but we'll see when we get another punch item list and work our way down.
The one other thing that actually benefits the idea of using a different material is that the Public Works gentlemen and myself, we, we're not carpet installers, so we will definitely be getting a contractor to do it. Whereas if we chose to put in flooring, we'll put the flooring in and we can save.
Didn't realize that.
All the costs, yes.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
That was one of my comments, thank you. Another one I was gonna say was making sure you've got money in there for, you've got a lot of electronic stuff, so electrician or is that, are you kind of including that in each, what you're thinking on each one of those, because you're?
So for the, the, both the electronic door locks and the ADA quotes were.
Turnkey, okay.
Were, yeah, turnkey and gotten before the the budget was generated.
And then I would follow up with what Ms. King said, if there was something, any other improvements that made sense that you get into it and say, gosh, this is only gonna be $20,000 more to do anything in here to make it nicer. I don't think you would have a lot of complaints from this council, so bear that in mind as you move forward.
Certainly, I have no problem asking for money.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All those in favor of forwarding this to full council, say aye.
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 Those like sign, the ayes have it. Hey. Next, public comments, any additional public comments? Are you know, committee concerns?
None.
What do you hear on German?
Don't move.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it adjourned. We just wanna be, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be out of turn. Things confusing.
All right, I'll go ahead and call the second committee meeting, public safety to order at 6:12. All committee members are present as well as city staff and city administrator. We'll move to public comment, any public comment? Seeing none, move to reading and approval of the minutes from September the 2nd.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to have a second. Any questions, corrections, otherwise hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from September the 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, on the front row, first up, we have Chief McCall.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee, just gonna give you a quick update, the budget, like I said, is in good standings for the fire department. Total calls so far is 4,326 calls. And like I said, we're projecting probably close to 6,000, depending on where our data goes. If it continues, that's where we're probably gonna be pushing 6,000 calls this year, who is 5,500 last year. Training hours for the month of September was 1,378 hours. I don't have a total, because they're still working on trying to get the new software formatted and all that, so I'll get that probably before even next month. And it is fire prevention month for October, so we're gonna be extremely busy with dealing with, or going to the schools and churches and stuff like that, so that's my report.
Awesome, any questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Judge Dorado.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, not too much out of the ordinary from judicial this evening. Just as an update, we have confirmed and distributed our 2026 dates for all our city courts, jury trials and prelims for next year. Debt set off is in full swing for the collection of all the back monies due to us. Judge Smith is officially starting this weekend, I'm looking forward to that, so thank you for his appointment. And budget wise, if you'll notice, all line items are pretty much within range with the exception of detention fees for this time of year. Our numbers have been higher due to an increase, not only in arrests, but also for bench warrants and commitments that have been imposed time. We have been very diligent in making sure we hold individuals accountable. And we will continue to do so, especially in cases where victims are involved or where charges that affect public safety within the city, so that's why you'll see that number a little bit higher. Other than that, I don't have anything for committee.
Follow up questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chief Miller.
Ms. King, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Allgood, I just got a couple of things to report, we're doing good on the budget, we also Friday were notified by the state that we received a $66,000 grant for body cameras, which that will go towards and offset the axon cost. We had coffee with a cop this past Wednesday. We're gonna be doing one at summer moon soon, I'll give you the dates when I get those. Sergeant Chef Check's already set up the polar plunge for February the 21st. Like I say, we'll, we'll just be there watching while they do that, so.
Maybe it won't be raining.
The, Clea says Smith's already in the process, yeah, heard you had a good phone conversation today. But yes, that's going great, he's, he's really bragged on the city and the police department so far. National night out, we had to change the dates on it, so our secondary date was rained a little bit, but we still had a pretty good turnout. We, I think out of 1,000 hot dogs, we got rid of 850, and what, what we did was Wednesday, we had a city cookout for the, to cook the hot dogs for the city employees. When you go outside, if you notice a box, it's called in the clutch, we did that last year, it's a donation for, to assist domestic victims. So what they'll do, they'll pick up toilet paper, personal hygiene for other things and everything, so when they have to be taken from their home and put in a different place, they have something to, that they can, that they can use. Also, Sergeant Chef Check does a thing at the schools called Margot Monday. I don't know if y'all have heard about it or not, but that's where she takes Margot to the school and she lets the little kids read the Margot, that way they can work on their reading skills.
Is that just the elementary schools?
I, I think so, right, right now, it's just the elementary schools, yes ma'am, and we picked up the the elementary school for the charter school, so she'll, she'll be starting to do that as well. But it's a good, good thing for the kids and their, their love in Margot.
Awesome.
All I got for that.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
As Chief Miller stays in place, we'll move to new business, the first is an ordinance amending chapter six of our codes for animals.
Yes, ma'am. Sam Duncan, our animal control and codes officer, came to me with a couple of recommendations to assist the officers and him with the, the ordinance dealing with animals. We're trying to make two changes in the ordinance, one's to add definitions and clarify the nuisance animal. Nuisance animal reporting requirements. Okay, so modern police department is regularly asked to investigate animal complaints throughout the city, investigations include complaints of nuisance animals, mistreatment, abandonment and other violations. Through the course of various investigations, multiple police departments code enforcement officers found that certain deficiencies exist within the current code that if changed would increase the effectiveness of the investigations. These changes include two definitions for clarity and conformity and updating the report, report, reporting requirements to include participation in any judicial action by the complainant. Two of the things, the, two of the definitions that we want to put in there, they're not really defined in the original ordinance, is sustenance and shelter. We pulled this directly out of South Carolina Code of Laws 47-1-10. Sustenance means adequate food provided as suitable interval, at suitable intervals of quantities or wholesome food stuff suitable for the special species and age sufficient to maintain a reasonable level of nutrition to allow for proper growth and weight in adequate water provided with constant access to supply of cream, clean, fresh and potable water provided in a suitable manner for the species. Shelter means that reasonably may, means that reasonably may be expected to protect the animal from physical suffering or impairment of health due to exposure to the elements or adverse weather. Lots of times when we, we bring up sustenance to the people that they're gonna be charged, they have to have water, it doesn't say what kind of water, it's got muddy water that at the time was with the ordinance, so we're clarifying that, that they have to have clean water and food. Also shelter, we have had instances where like at the arbors, you have the the decks on the backside of the house, they'll put the dogs out there and it's not, it, it has a, it has a roof over it, but it doesn't have anything blocking the cold or the heat from the animal, so it's catching, it's, it's not really sheltered. So that just, that, those two things need to be, they're in there, but they need to, the definition needs to be put in there so we can enforce it the way it needs to be enforced. Also, the second change put forward in the amendment relates to complaints about nuisance animals. Often individuals do not want to produce written complaints, only verbal. Their lack, their lacks clear notification requirements of offering animal, of the offending animal owner, and there is no requirements for the complainant to appear and to testify in court. The deficiencies lead to drop charges, ineffective complaint, follow up and ineffective prosecution. Lots of times you'll have people that they don't want to write a statement and the officer goes and does investigation and he ends up charging the person and tells the people they need to come to court, which is not required. And so they don't show up in the case, either it keeps getting continued or it gets dismissed. So what we had, what we were requesting for the change in the nuisance animal is upon receipt of two detailed written and signed affidavits, so it's forcing them to write a statement and have two, two statements for it. And also that the animal control officer or the appropriate law or codes enforcement officer shall notify the owner or keeper of the animal in question that complaints have been received and will investigate the complaint. In the past, all we had to do is we investigated and then we tell the person, go charge them, well, there's a process. Well, there's a process, and you need to inform them that they're being investigated prior to that, so we want that change, we'd like that change in here. And also, the part about the people not show, the complainants not showing up, it says the complainants will be required to appear and testify in court at the time the case is scheduled for trial. If complaints fail to, complainants will fail to appear in court at the time the case is scheduled, the case will be dismissed. So there's just, there's no gray area, it's just, it'll be dismissed. And staff recommends adopting the ordinance as presented or with any requested modifications.
All right, let's...
So... The couple of questions that I have, the first one would be, when we talk about shelter, and the way it reads, you know, shelter means shelter that reasonably may be expected to protect the animal from physical suffering or impairment of health due to exposure to the elements or adverse weather. Is that too broad? Or is that something that can be interpreted? Because the way you explained it, you explained it, there's the sides, it's not just putting a roof over the head, it's a matter of all the elements and having those protections. My concern is that it might be too broad, and we may not understand like what that actually means.
Right, right. We can, we can go in and put that as far as the, you're talking about like a four-sided house or a doghouse or something to keep them away from the elements.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if that's what's actually needed, I think it probably should be in there so that it's understood, it needs, we need to have three walls or whatever. Because otherwise, I think it becomes an interpretation of what the police officer says and what the owner says.
Or run into, to get to this point, so yes, sir. But like I say, they would leave them on their patio, and like I say, it's got a roof and it's got two sides on each side, but like I say, it's wide open. It's, it doesn't prevent them from being...
And the other question that I have, well, I guess it's two, two more questions. The other one, it says the investigating office determines that the complaint, the complaint is justified. Again, do they, is there enough rules and regulations in there that they understand how to interpret that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the last one is saying that the person who is making the complaint has to be required to appear at trial. If, if they already don't want to make a report, and now we're saying you also have to be in court, they're probably even less likely to make the report. So we're less likely to know that a, an animal's in danger. That would be my concern, by requiring them to be in court.
I mean, like I say, they're the ones that, that saw it in real time. The officer's just coming later on, so we can't really testify to what they saw, that's why we need them here to testify.
I understand it adds to the case, but if you're going and you're seeing either neglect or poor shelter or something like that, you're reporting that on your own.
Well, a lot of this has to do with the barking dogs, I should have clarified that. A lot of this has to do with the barking dogs.
Okay.
Because people will, some people will call and report the dogs barking, and will go out and sit with the engine off for an hour or so and not ever hear anything. So it's one of those things that we lock them into a statement, and then we also make them come to court to testify.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly understand that if we're talking about essentially noise. So I, you're telling me that I shouldn't be concerned based on the way it's written? Because if it was a, if it was a situation where the police officer is going there and they're seeing elements of neglect, they can see that the shelter is not adequate, they already have enough.
Yes, sir. Because lots of times when we get the call, it's basically a call just saying that so-and-so's dogs hadn't been fed a couple days, so they go out there. But a lot of it is, is, like I say, a lot of that has to do with the noise as far as the barking.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And I would like to add to that. I mean, just to note that and reiterate that the definitions do come from the South Carolina Code, so it's, it's kind of a standard verbiage for those definitions. I appreciate y'all and Officer Duncan pushing for this, because I know in the past, we've had situations that needed to be addressed, unfortunately, and we just didn't have any teeth per se in the ordinance to do anything. And to your point, Mr. Allgood, I guess I kind of been, feel differently about having the person complaining come into court, because some of the incident, some of the situations that involve this, that I've been familiar with in the past, I think the people complaining would be more than willing to come because they want it to stop. You know, whether it's a, you know, a dog getting out of the fence and potentially biting someone, or bark, you know, something that may just be a barking situation.
Most of the time, the people already know who's complaining, because the person's either confronted them or called before.
Right. Try to work it out as neighbors per se, yeah.
And also, in other criminal cases, we always have the victim or the complainant come to court and testify as well. Because like I say, a lot of that stuff is not something that we witness ourselves, so we can't really write.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be charging them if we don't have any, any kind of documentation backing it up.
Excellent conversation, but just a reminder that now, you know, we have something that can be used for enforcement purposes when needed.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The thing Frank had said about the shelter, only concern would be is, you may need a roof, something for the dog to keep warm or the wind. But in the summers, it'd be different, somebody may treat an animal different. I think with myself, my poor dogs have to, in the summer, have to sit in the, on their couches they're not allowed on, even though they go on it. With the ceiling fan blowing on them for the day, they're generally okay. And in the winter, they're, they're rarely out, they always complain and come in. I don't have a shelter for the winter, because they're not out that often. So I guess, I don't know if you're gonna, it needs to probably just be...
If it's an outside dog, I mean, if you're just letting your dog out for a little while, that's, that's not right there, it's the ones that are actually
All the time.
Out there all the time, and they've got, like, maybe a piece of sheet rock or plywood up against a tree, that's not enough to keep dogs from getting cold or too hot.
With a chain. All right, what's committee's pleasure on this?
To make a motion to forward a full council for the changes to ordinance, to the ordinance amending Chapter Six animals. It's submitted.
I think I have a motion to forward to full council, recommendations to approve ordinance amending Chapter Six for animals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Allgood, any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of forwarding to full council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Duncan's gonna take this one.
Yes.
Okay, so up next, we have the ordinance to amend Chapter Thirty-eight, through truck routes, another good, updated ordinance coming our way.
Absolutely, so, yes, ma'am, if you'll turn your attention to the agenda summary item that I just handed the update for, added some clarity here to make it a little bit easier to kind of follow where, where we were going with this. So essentially, we've had on the books a no-through traffic or no-through truck route for some time. But we ran into a situation recently in reviewing it and have been experiencing some difficulties in some other parts of the city as well. And what we realized was that only one no-through truck route was specifically identified in code. And then the additional issue is that although it's listed, it's referencing a map that's not in the code. So for an officer out in the field who may want to look up, hey, what am I citing this, this violation to? They would have limited information to know how to cite that individual based on, on Hamby Drive. So what this does is essentially provides a sharper or clarity for the ordinance in order to observe the, of truck routes, that no trucks, that no-through trucks will be established pursuant to the article unless otherwise provided, including the following routes, and that would be the one that's currently exist, which is SC Road S three twenty-five, which is Hamby Drive, between Miller Road and Forester Drive. And then we would add to that Owens Lane to Ashmore Bridge Road by way of Maple Drive, same route by way of Crestwood Drive, and same route by way of Woodland Drive. So, and there was a kind of an illustration of what that looks like. Those are where we've been seeing a lot of complaints recently, we had some no-through truck signs there, but there's not a corresponding ordinance that an officer or that could cite in the field. There is a section of the code that allows council to adopt additional roads by resolution. However, that then requires our officers to hold on to all those resolutions or to jot them down somewhere, and then just always remember which ones are no-through trucks. So my, our advice is to adopt them all by ordinance, so then that way it's clear and concise as to where they are, where they're applicable, and then we can make sure that the signage is appropriate, not just on the roads that are, once you've turned onto those roads, but also working with DOT to have signs installed on Ashmore Bridge Road, for example, that would alert a truck prior to turning onto, say, Maple or Crestwood and the like. And so this just cleans up that language if council so desires.
Yeah, so again, this is, as Mr. Duncan stated, cleaning up the language. If you recall, we approved an ordinance for Hamby several months back. And this adds the three additional roads off of Ashmore Bridge Road. Yes, sir.
So the, with making this, the idea is that if we had additional roads that were added to this list, it's just a matter of we just got to add it to the list moving forward.
That would be correct, yes, sir, and we would just do it by amending the ordinance to add a new road.
And I imagine it would just be way too complicated to make some kind of blanket rule for certain roads of a certain caliber. That's just not something that would ever be possible, like you can't drive a truck on this type of road, this, 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 or this. It's just better to do this.
Possible, we haven't thought about it from that approach, though. It's classifying certain types of roads as no-through truck roads by kind of right.
Yeah, I, it'd probably be a nightmare, but I just didn't know if that was something that was...
Haven't thought of it that way.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I have no further question.
Mr. Duncan, I just, a thought, so what if you have a road in the city that you know all, that has a no-through truck sign, but it's not on this list?
Then we should add it to the list.
Okay.
So we, we think we covered them all, but we may have...
Look at Knollwood Drive.
On Knollwood Drive?
Yes.
I'll look at Knollwood.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we can just
We'll add Knollwood.
Add that part to, yes.
I'll go back in. We'll add number five.
I don't know if committee can think of anything else, but yeah, that's...
That's kind of where I was going with kind of that, that question, because obviously, you gave the example of Knollwood Drive, it's a residential road. And so we know that there's other residential roads. The question is, is if you made it a blanket statement of no residential roads, is that even possible or feasible? What it calls, do we have roads littered with no-truck signs? And then we're like, oh, that's a nightmare, so that's probably not the best way.
Well, in, in, not to stick my head in the lion's mouth on Knollwood, Knollwood's not a cut-through, though. Whereas these were cut-through. Now, you may have truck traffic using Knollwood from time to time, but it's not a cut-through like going from New Neely Ferry to Ashmore Bridge Road. So there may be other traffic calming devices that might be more appropriate, but it's not in the same kind of cut-through vein as, as, as some others would be, so...
A hundred percent, so if you think of a truck coming up or down Ash, or up Ashmore, and they're turning left onto Maple to cut across to get to Main Street, because that's where their GPS system's sending them. So this is trying to, and furthermore, hopefully, it would help with us being able to place signage to keep those trucks from just kind of, again, an identical situation to the Hamby Drive situation.
Right, well, in the case of Knollwood Drive, there's two instances there. There's one where people are turning into Knollwood thinking they're going the wrong way, or end up going the wrong way. They intended to go down toward Hamby, they just turned right instead of left. So there's, there's that, because we've had trucks that get stuck.
Oh.
Gentleman's house behind you.
Yeah.
Where they can't figure out how to turn around.
Gotcha.
So there's that, but then there's also the issue of someone in the neighborhood who may be driving a truck that shouldn't be driving a truck in our neighborhood.
Right.
But that's a whole nother story.
Well, if they're making a delivery, though, they're okay. But another area that, that has, I think had a similar problem in the past, but was solved with a different strategy, was some of the roads that come off of North Main that can get you to West Butler.
Yeah.
By going, what is, I can't think of the, White Drive and Evening or Sunset.
Yeah.
Some of those, where they put in speed humps instead, and that's kind of, I think, eliminated a lot of that through truck, through traffic. I don't think it was truck traffic for the most part, but I think what we're seeing is because so many trucks are coming from New Neely Ferry and cutting across that area to get to Ashmore Bridge is, is really what is driving a lot of the complaints. But I mean, there, there may be other, and we have some that are truck weight limiting signs in the city, especially over on Holland, on the two-lane section going towards that bridge. So we have some different restrictions in different places, but yeah, if there's any, we'll add Knollwood to the list, we'll add any others. We want to make sure we be as comprehensive as we can, but we'll continue to add to it as, as new problems emerge or, or things happen.
I mean, there's, there's, there's two schools of thought. One is you, you add it, you add to the list when we realize there's a problem, and you don't create a problem out of it. Or if there are certain areas where we know we want to protect, that we know that we don't make sure that it doesn't become a problem, we add it to the list.
But no, that's, that's a good, that's a good idea, too. The residential streets by and large don't receive truck, truck traffic, which is a good thing. And, and so sometimes it will, it just development will kind of dictate, traffic patterns will change. When we have East Butler all torn up for Build a Better Butler, we're gonna find how folks are gonna start using other cut-throughs. And I, I see Hyde Circle coming a cut-through for some truck traffic, and Miller Road's a cut-through for some, and Murray to some small degree as well. So yeah, I think it's just gonna be a continuously changing problem, or a situation that we have to just respond to when we need, when we can.
All right, anybody like to make a motion on this?
Like to make a motion to forward a full council amendment, Chapter Thirty-eight, to the traffic and vehicles submitted here.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of forwarding to full council and ordinance to amend Chapter Thirty-eight through truck routes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, I feel like I'm Mr. Steinbach's committee tonight with all my ordinances. Moving on to ordinance to amend Chapter Twenty-eight, parades, picketing, and demonstrations.
Yes, ma'am, that's me again. Okay, so what we have here is again, another kind of a gap in our ordinances. So Chapter Twenty-eight is focused on creating rules and order around parades, picketing, and demonstrations. The one thing it doesn't do, though, is really clearly articulate any structural rules to demonstrations. It's kind of tagged on to the definition of the ordinance there or the name of the ordinance, but it's not a very clearly defined section. And one of the things that we've noticed in the last six months or so is an uptick of folks, whether communicating with us on the front end or just showing up, but demonstrations of various sorts on the Malden Gateway Bridge. And so in, in receiving those complaints and understanding that some of those complaints were about, you know, the safety of pedestrians and, and the users of the bridge, obviously, some of the complaints were about the type of speech that was being demonstrated, which that's not what we're focused on tonight at all about. But it was really about looking at, do we have the tools in place to give the police department the tools that they need to clearly understand how to treat various types of demonstrations on the bridge? And what we found was we had a scattered shot of, we had language pertaining to displaying or affixing banners and signs over in Section Six Four of the zoning code. We had trash being left from demonstrations, or littering over in Section Thirty-six dash four. And then we had interfering with users of the, of bridge, in this case, it was more of the trail and sidewalks in Section Twenty-eight seventy-one. So the idea was to combine those elements into a dedicated section that clearly articulates that while it, that here are the rules and restrictions when it comes to how we'd like to see demonstrations being, or conducted on public property. being ga, or conducted on public property. And the, in order to provide clear guidance to MPD and the public, to demonstrations and protest on the bridge, sidewalks and public property, we prepared this ordinance for consideration. This ordinance is not intended to regulate the content of speech or expression, but is con, is content neutral. Regulation of the time, place and manner of such activities narrowly tailored to address public safety concerns and the free use of public spaces by the public. The ordinance would specifically prohibit affixing permanent or temporary physical structure or display on any bridge, trail or sidewalk without permission of the city. Requires demonstrations, demonstrators to leave a minimum of five feet of unobstructed width on any public trail, three feet for sidewalks and one half of available width on any bridge walkway for the safe passage of users. Requires a permit for demonstrations that involve groups of 20 people or more. Does not limit or prohibit spontaneous demonstrations, whether it's for or against for vigils or things like that. But rather if someone is wanting to have a regular or reoccurring, or even just a one-off, it just provides a mechanism for us to know who's out there and the contact information, not the content of what they're, they're out there for. Plus we sometimes get requests for groups that want to use the bridge for an event, whether it's a 5K or the Girl Scouts used it for a ceremony. And so having that knowledge of who's using it, when they're using it, it's just like a rental of, of a shelter or a picnic area or a ball field or, or things like that, except there's not a charge for it. Requires a per, already said that, provides for an application process that cannot be reasonably withheld and is for the purpose of having a point of contact for those demonstrating and for scheduling purposes. The application will not require a statement of the purpose or content of the demonstration. If a permit is denied by the city administrator or designee, will provide a written explanation and when possible, offer an alternative date and time. And something that in discussions today with the city attorney, he said that he was going to propose some language to be added to it that would actually provide an appeal process. So if it was denied, we couldn't find a reasonable differing, a different day or time, that that decision could be appealed to the committee or to council for our final resolution. So they are given an appeals process there. Permit is not required for spontaneous gatherings of individuals responding to recent news or events, so long as it does not violate other provisions. And any person who violates provision of the ordinance could be subject to fines or fees up to the city's max. And so I did provide an update after talking with Daniel this morning. I provided an update to the ordinance and I'll send that out to everybody else. But the, I just put some of the notes that Daniel wanted to work on. And one in particular in 28201, it was just clarifying some language and, and in E, which I know it says two D's, but there was supposed to be an E on the, the new copy. It's got the E there properly. Just stopping that sentence short because we wouldn't issue a permit for someone to put up a banner on city property. That's not how we would do it. So Daniel said, just don't bother putting that language in there. Just leave it out. I was like, okay. And then in section 28202, Daniel's proposing that appeal process in E. So he's going to give me that language. And then he wanted to insert some language about any other conflicts with other provisions of code or whatnot into a new section. So he's going to give me that language and we'll update this. But it overall sets the framework, provides clear guidance to MPD and the public for understanding that when they're out there. And then the, the biggest issue we've had out there is really people affixing things to the bridge. And whether it's with clamps, bungies, you know, obviously we've seen a little bit graffiti out there and we've been dealing with that. But our concern is, is if people are affixing and locks, locks was a big one that we've seen as well. And that it, it can deteriorate the, the, the membrane or the coating on that structure, the, the frame structure, the mesh like web, which just means we'll have to replace it sooner. And then it could lead to staining and some other issues. So we don't really like that. In the last couple of weeks, we've really been working with the groups that go out there on Sunday afternoons and making them aware that, hey, we, you're hap, we're happy to have you here. Happy. We're, we're, we're comfortable with you being here, but we don't want you affixing things to the, the bridge for safety reasons and for the fact that it could stress and, and deteriorate the, the material. So with that, I'll stop talking and take questions.
Mr. Allgood.
All right. Two questions here under section 28 dash 200A. And we talk about any demonstration, assembly, picketing, speechmaking, marching, protesting, vigil or other like conduct involves the communication of a message to the public. Would a 5K qualify?
No, that would be an event and that would be covered under a whole different process.
Yeah. And then under section 28 dash 201D, where it says it will be unlawful to use amplified sound on any public bridge, public trail or sidewalk at a volume that is audible more than 500 feet away. Now it says sidewalk and it says public trail, it says public bridge. But I'm just want to make sure that that would not, if we think about, for example, our Christmas parade and we have cars driving down the road, there is a sidewalk there. They're not on the sidewalk. They shouldn't be on the sidewalk. So I'm assuming that that doesn't apply because there's a lot of those dance teams that play their music really, really loud.
Right. That again, would fall under event. So that would not, this would be for the, the purpose of conveying a message to the public. And it's really just removing the amplification to where it could be constituted noise ordinance violation if otherwise.
And my concern would be is if, if you're, if you're saying that the Malden Parade is an event, then we do not need a section that starts out with parades, picketing and demonstration. You probably need to amend that section. Otherwise it'll get confusing that people will think that that's a section they need to look under.
Sure. No, I, I completely understand that. Yeah.
You know, I like parades.
Well, and we like parades too. I think procession is probably, yeah, I got you. We can look, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move, to amend chapter 28, parades, picketing and demonstrations to protect public safety and public property. Submitted here to move to full counsel.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Duncan, and I think this is a given, but once we have first and second reading potentially on this amendment, I, I know that PD is actively policing the per se, the bridge. And so I guess it's just going to be a learning curve there.
So.
When this passes for the enforcement side of it, for the.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. I mean, we, we like to educate first.
Right, right.
If, if things, you know.
And the application for the 20 plus.
Yeah. And the one that, the one that is current, that goes out there most frequently, that has been communicating with us, has been less than 20 people.
Okay.
Generally speaking, this last time, I think there was two different groups that were out there this past Sunday. And so that really wouldn't count as, that would be two separate 20 counts essentially.
I guess the other thing is when we do have 5Ks, you know, which may only be four to six times a year or whatever that might look like, you know, to assure that folks aren't out there during those times. So I think we'll have to be very proactive in watching and.
And we're. Yes, ma'am.
Aware that that's potentially, there's going to be folks out there. So.
And we are working on some signage to better educate those who are going up to the bridge, the bridge rules and expectations. But it's, it's most definitely our process, our thought process is, is it's educate. Just let folks know, we have this, this is the expectations, which the group that communicated with us months ago, we did, that's regularly there at two o'clock on Sundays. We did let them know that, hey, we don't want you to affix anything permanently. We communicate that with them regularly. When we go out there, we just remind them and then they, they pretty much comply. We just have had to keep reminding them, but so far they, they at least are communicating with us and aren't giving us a bunch of pushback on it. But.
It'd also potentially be, you know, a traffic hazard with folks being distracted, looking at something affixed to the bridge. So yes, so thanks to, to the enforcement that we've done so far. And, and again, for another ordinance that as the city continues to grow and we have our bridge, it's needed. Okay. So we have a motion to forward the ordinance amended chapter 28, parades, picketing and demonstrations to full counsel. All those in favors, a motion and a second. So Mr. Allgood, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Public comment, seeing, hearing none. Committee concerns. What I have on the adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I withstand adjourned at 6:52. Thanks, everybody. Up next, Mr. Matney.
I got excited to see how was the first three, and I realized that we had meetings after, so. All right, calling EPD to order, 6:53 PM, first public comment period. Hearing none. What do I hear on reading and approval of minutes?
I'm moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second is our discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes are approved as presented. Reports communications, city officer, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a real quick update. One of the things that we can have been working on and we've been discussing or talking about through various, at various times this budget year is the idea of creating potentially a hospitality tax program. And so we are almost ready to unveil that to the committee. And so essentially what we're looking at is we are often asked by different organizations within the community about levels of support to either do public and nonprofit partnerships for various activities. And so the idea is to consolidate that into a, an application process to create a little bit more equity in that clarity for that process. And then also to potentially unlock new opportunities in the future. And so we almost have that ready to go. We'll have that next month for consideration, for discussion. And we'll kind of chew through that and hopefully we can, if council so desires, we'll move forward with that hopefully in the new year.
Any questions for Mr. Duncan?
All right. Then that's going to take us to unfinished business of which we have none, which takes us to new business, public art trail.
Good evening, Chair and Committee. Tonight I'm here to ask for or give recommendation and ask approval to commission Aldo Mezzarelli to build and install his piece, The Minstrel of the Muses along the Malden Art Trail. As you know, each year there's an RFP that is sent out. The staff comes up with a theme for the public art trail. And the idea is to allow those who submit their proposals to convey based off of the theme, how that sculpture would look. And so we received three proposals this year. The theme for this year was inspiring transformation, which is focuses on the promises of community growth and vibrant development, which is something that can be seen all around us. Moreover, the process of transformation and rebirth is necessary with its full potential to become evident in hope this helps residents craft a life of, full of energy and color. And so we received three proposals. Staff reviewed each proposal and concerted based upon the artist's scales, models, concept statements and, sorry, stability for the trail. The Minstrel of the Muses by Aldo Mezzarelli is a memento sculpture that embodies the transformation power of inspiration and creativity. Composed of three carefully stacked cubes, which you see here to my left, possibly your right. The piece traces a symbolic journey from ancestral roots through diverse sources of human ingu, ingenuity culminating in the vibrant expression of artistic, artistic creation. Each cube will integrate symbolic elements, including ancestral mass, artistic and scientific motifs and natural forms. Crowning the sculpture stands the minstrel, a timeless figure of the free spirited artist. When the piece is completed, it will stand at seven, 10 in height and three and a half in width and weight, approximately 330 pounds. The medium will be mostly welded steel and painted resin and will be installed with removable, removable concrete screws. And as we did last year during the blues and jazz, this will be the opportunity where that piece will be revealed during blues and jazz of next year.
Any questions? Is there a motion? To make a motion to forward to full counsel for approval of commission, the Aldo Mezzarelli to build and install his piece, The Minstrel of the Muses along the Malden Art Trail. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We forward that to full counsel with a recommendation for approval. Brings us to a second public comment period. Brings us to committee concerns. One more motion.
Move. We adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Discussion, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned at 6:59.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and call this finance and policy committee meeting to order. The time is seven o'clock. Members present are myself, Michael Reynolds, Ms. Carol King, Mr. Taft Matney, as well as various audience members, Mr. Duncan, mayor, other committee, other members of council. So thank you all for being here. First item we have is public comment. Hearing and seeing none. Next one we have is reading and approval of minutes. What do I hear on the minutes for August 4th, 2025?
May for approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing's unanimous. Minutes approved and submitted. Next item is going to be reports and communications from city offers, officers. Mr. Duncan, you're first.
Although I'm always long winded, I don't have anything. I just, I'm good.
Hold on, let me. Well, record, let me record this moment.
Good right now. I'm just really proud of the staff and doing a great job. And we, I don't want to steal Mark's thunder, so I won't say anything about evaluations, but I think things are going really well and we're doing a great job. Yeah, that's it.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for your very brief summary. Next item is going to be finance director, Ms. Holly Abercrombie.
Good evening, Chair and committee members. I don't have anything to report on so far for this current year. Everything, well, I kind of do, but I'm pretty sure Seth has addressed it. We did receive the SCORE funds last week. And then, you know, what, we've also received two of the FEMA reimbursements, the smaller ones. And we're still waiting on the big one that has been approved. So I do have that to report on. Other than that, nothing is out of the ordinary. and we're still waiting on the big one that has been approved. Um, so I do have that to report on. Um, other than that, nothing is out of the ordinary on, um, revenues or expenditures for this point in time for the year. Um, the auditors were in last week. They were in Wednesday to come and just check on things that we can't physically, um, you know, electronically get to them, and they have to come physically look at it. Um, and so far haven't heard any problems. Um, the, the special audit for the FEMA funds and the skip grant funds, because those are federal dollars, um, is done and waiting for completion with, um, you know, the higher-ups and in the firm, but, um, that was done quickly, went well. Um, and so we're just waiting on the rest, and they will be here on November seventeenth to prove that the audit to y'all at the council meeting, and I'm working with them to find out when we're going to have a, um, a preliminary draft that I can send out to all y'all, um, before that, but, um, I will let y'all know and keep you updated if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. Any questions for our Finance Director? None. Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. All right, next up, we're going to have our HR Director, Mr. Mark Putnam.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Committee members. Um, we finished our, um, we finished our, um, Employee Health Day, uh, where we kicked off, uh, EAP program, MyGroup, um, and we rolled it out, but our, this coming year, what we want to do is increase usage. When you look at the historical usage of the city, it's been around one, one and a half percent of the employees using EAP. Uh, we want to increase that with the help of MyGroup to, um, three to five percent. Uh, since the inception of EAP, they've always had a negative connotation to it, that it was weak to use it. We want to change that mindset to where it's a, um, strength to use it. If there is a problem that life is thrown at you, you now have resources and tools to go out there and help you with that, and that's what we're going to be working with MyGroup over the year, uh, the next year to do that. If you look at their track record, uh, usually around year five, most companies or cities that are with them are at about eight percent usage. Uh, I know we can't get there this year, but we're going to keep striving to get there. It's, it's an excellent tool, and we want our employees to take part of it. Um, we just finished up the evaluation process for the city. All employees have had an evaluation. Uh, next week we will end with their increases in, and they will see those increases on ten twenty-four, uh, their check. Uh, and this month we'll be working with our insurance renewal, and we know last year we brought the renewal to council in October. This has not been as good a year as we had in the past. Um, so we will be coming in November. Uh, with that, we will still have a November open enrollment, and everything should go through, but, uh, I will say brace yourselves. It will not be terrible, but it will not be the three or four percents that we've seen in the past.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Putnam. The only thing I would add, when you say EAP, you're talking in employee assistance programs, which would be anything from, therapy, financial assistance, financial guidance, and things like that. So, am I correct in that?
Old gamut, and that's, that's why we brought this group in, uh, so that we could cover a multitude of issues that our employees would have, and, uh, it, th- this is just an amazing, uh, tool that they can use app on their phone. They can do virtual visits. They can do in-person visits if they want to, and it just makes it such ea- a much easier process, much easier process.
Well, and I, and I do agree. I think it's important to flip the narrative on, on asking for help and, and, and things like that, and we as a culture do that. That we don't ask very much. So, so I'm glad that you're taking an effort in trying to let our, um, employees know about the benefit as well as encourage them. So that's encouraging to me. So, um, and that, and that's something that you see in a lot of large corporations or, or other things. It's a, it's a legitimate benefit to being an employee here. So.
Also included it, not just our employees, but there's their family members that live at their home.
Perfect. Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Putnam. Okay, we have no unfinished business. Our only new business is going to be council rules and procedures. Um, there was a workshop done, which I was not able to attend, and I appreciate you all, um, carrying forward in, in having a workshop, being able to talk about, um, additional changes to rules or just rethinking some of the processes. Um, I had to obviously lean on Mr. Duncan for what came out of that. Uh, we talked a good bit about the, the conversation, and I think we have a pretty good, I have from Mr. Duncan, a broad understanding of what was discussed. Um, part of the reason we called that workshop was to, you know, as I was thinking through, as we're dealing with technology, do we, do we reevaluate how, uh, we define, um, our ability to vote? Do we want to encourage or have the option to Zoom meet and still be able to vote and do some stuff like that? So, um, with that, it came to our attention that maybe we should evaluate lots of things. Um, I know there was some talk on from Mr. Matney about committee sizes, um, talks on changing dates and times and, and things like that for committee meetings and et cetera. So, what you have before you is Mr. Duncan's view on how those discussions went. Uh, is there anything that my committee would like to talk, discuss, work through? Very good, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, make the motion to forward to full council the recommendation to amend, um, city council rules and procedures.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to amend the council rules and procedures. As noted in here, the items that you all saw that were in red, the, the biggest thing was cleaning up some verbiage, so there weren't any major changes, which I think, again, going back to speaking, um, having public speakers and making sure we're consistent across the board is important, so I appreciate you all. And the labor that you put in with that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor and forwarding this full council with a recommendation of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you, Committee, and thank you for the rest of council members for your input. Um, and Mr. Matney's suggestion to hold a workshop. We'll blame that on him and only him. Um, okay, next item is going to be public comment. Hearing and seeing none. Committee concerns. Hearing and seeing none. What do I hear on adjournment?
To move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you, Committee. Next committee up is
Last one.
The last one. So that everybody's awake.
All right. I'd like to call to order the October sixth Business and Development Services Committee meeting. Uh, all members are present, including everyone else that belongs here and or wants to be here. Uh, next is our public comment. None. Moving on to reading and approval of minutes. What do we hear on that?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Prove unanimously. Moving on to reports and communications, Mr. Dear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Co- Committee members. I just really have one thing I was going to report on tonight, and that is that we saw quite an uptick in new business licenses that we issued last night, and there were two main drivers to that uptick. First is that the, uh, Greenville Classical Academy is going to be holding a festival and holiday market on November first, so as part of their organization, they already had a lot of their vendors come to the city and get their business licenses. But, uh, that looks like it's fixing to be a, a very big event out there at their facility at four hundred Brookfield Parkway, so so that'll be an exciting event worth checking out. Secondly, we've been, uh, our department's really been hitting rental properties in both long-term and short, short-term property, uh, property owners who are running it out. They're prop- their homes out long-term or short-term, and so, uh, we've had a number of those come in and get business license for the rental properties that they're running, and that really contributed to the large influx of business licenses that we had last month. That's all I have for my report, but I'm sure glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir. Mr. Matney.
Uh, Mr. Deerhog, I got a, uh, an email from somebody the other day who's holding a meeting on the twentieth and wanted somebody from the city to come and, and speak about things that are going on in the city. I informed them that we have a standing council meeting that night. Um, and the organizer responded that one of the things that, um, she wanted to be able to share with the attendees is the new chicken ordinance. Um, would it be possible for somebody to put a one-pager together on the chicken ordinance for me to pass along so that they can share at that meeting?
Yep, in fact, we've already have a draft of that. Well, that's, uh, been in the works, so.
Beautiful, thank you.
That's the, that's the formal name.
The chicken.
Anything else, Mr. Deerhog? All right. Uh, unfinished business. We have none. New business. Our first is an amendment to section seven three of the Malden zoning ordinance, uh, pertaining to mobile food sales. Deerhog.
All right, thank you. You may recall last year, we passed, uh, updated our regulations on food trucks and temporary uses, and that, that actually has gone very well and been very successful. It's been very helpful, especially for different events that, um, we're able to allow now without having to require a permit. And so what we have before you tonight is a little bit of an expansion on that ordinance. And what this expansion entails is to allow regular mobile food sales or food trucks at specific types of places of entertainment. Would include family entertainment centers, sport club facilities, micro breweries, and micro distilleries. The reason why this is coming up now is because we actually have two such places that are getting ready to come to Malden, including the Pickle Yard, that I think you're familiar with by now, and, uh, and a company called Brewwell is looking at bringing a brewery and wellness center on Miller Road. Both of these businesses have expressed a desire to accommodate a food truck at their location to kind of supplement the type of facility they are. So what you have before you tonight is an amendment to the ordinance that would allow mobile food sales that, uh, these specific types of businesses allows up to two mobile food sale vendors at a time. Um, there would need, they would need to be, they would need to designate a place for those mobile food centers to operate, not just taking up a parking space, but actually have a designated area that doesn't interfere with the parking. And while we would not require a permit for them to have that, we will just want to ask them to provide a site plan so they can show us where they're going to have the food truck set up and make sure that it meets the intent of this ordinance. So, that's what's before you, and, um, really just want to see if you have any input or thoughts or questions about this, and if not, we will, uh, get this queued up to go to the planning commission later this month.
Mr. Matney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and maybe it's just me, but I had a little heartburn with limiting it to, um, for the food trucks. I mean, number one, the food trucks aren't going to show up unless, uh, the people who are inviting them can guarantee that there will be, uh, some minimum amount that, that will be generated. Um, I, I, I think that we could look at, be looking at some unintended consequences if we limited it to two. I would almost be of the opinion that we don't even address a limit.
Both of the, um, the businesses that are coming to want to do this, they were act- I asked them, how many are you planning to have at one time, and they said, oh, no, we're just going to have one at one time. And I was like, okay, well, I'm going to err on at least giving you two, so I, I understand where you're going with this. Um, I think the other flip side that I was kind of thinking about with this is, well, do we want to get into creating, um, food truck courts? Like you see in some of places, like Simpsonville's had one. Um, I don't know if it's still going or not, but maybe. And, um, that might be a separate, uh, ordinance that we tackle and starting to allow those, but, um.
Yeah, there's one up on, uh, up on Malden Road that's just barely inside the Greenville City limit.
Yeah.
Before the Little Cricket. So, you know, I, I don't know that we really want to necessarily limit them.
Yeah, I, that was the, the one issue I had too. My, my question is more in, is there a way to do it like formulaically? Space, you know, a certain amount of space per truck kind of situation. That way it, it provides so they're not jammed in there, and we're not creating a safety hazard. But it also provides if they want to make space for three or four, or whatever it is, they have that ability, so we're not, we're not into that. Limiting or not, we're just saying, hey, we think this is the right amount of space per truck, and then it's basically a formula. Like you said, if they're submitting a site plan, then they would see you, you could be able to kind of keep an eye on it that way.
Um, could. What, the one thought that's running through my head just immediately is, well, if we're going to get into having some places where they're going to have more food trucks, then we probably also will need to make sure that we have, um, some adequate requirements for parking, because it may be that they may generate more parking having mul- you know, several, several food trucks than just whatever the specific business that they're, they're to support. So that might be something we need to take a little bit deeper dive into.
Yeah, maybe that's part of the formula, space and spaces per or something. I don't, I don't know, but that way we don't get into what it is or isn't. It's just a matter of creating a safe space or.
I think that would be part of the site plan design that would have to be approved. So going back to your point, it still allows BDS to keep an eye to make sure that things aren't getting too congested, that there's still safe parking, that there's ingress and egress and room for people to mill around.
Just my thought.
That's great. So it's not necessary to have a motion on this, but I appreciate that input. We'll, we'll work on some of these things, and we'll go ahead though and include some of those things and queue it up for the planning commission and yeah, come back to you after that.
All right. On to the next one, which is an amendment to article seven and eight of the zoning ordinance pertaining to accessory dwelling units.
All right. We brought this up earlier this year and kind of stated in the, that this is one of the biggest requests we've received. A lot of people looking to create a living space for their parents, or maybe a, a, a parent who's aging. Um, still like to have a little independence, but one close by. Uh, we've had some requests where it relates to children that some families are trying to accommodate, um, living, uh, you know, at their home, still having some independent space. Um, I actually have had a few seniors who have senior, uh, citizens who have reached out to me, and they're just looking for a way to get some supplemental income. So, uh, the ordinance before you tonight, let me give you a little background. We, we do currently allow accessory dwelling units in the city, but it's only in our small lot residential districts, which are R ten, R eight, R six, RM one, RM, and RO. The ordinance before you tonight, which is in draft form, and still would need to go to planning commission first before, or goes on to council, is, uh, amends the ordinance by allowing them accessory dwelling units additionally in the R twenty, R fifteen, and R twelve districts. And we really beefed up the standards, um, for accessory dwelling units. In fact, I'm curious to hear your input if you think maybe we've gone too far, or maybe there's still some areas that we haven't gone far enough on. But some of the new things we've introduced are a maximum height, especially where it's, you know, accessory dwelling is added either as a detached building structure or a addition. We've added where some additional language about if it's done as a detached structure where it can be placed. We've added some language about minimum setbacks. Um, essentially making sure that we're using the minimum setbacks that apply to the home and not like for sheds and stuff like that. Uh, we've added some standards about maximum number of bedrooms, which we set at two. Added some language and standards about parking, about the architecture, design of any new additions or detached units. Um, about where the entryways need to be located so that they're not facing the front, uh, things about kitchen utilities. Prohibited forms, like things we're not going to allow as accessory dwelling units, like mobile homes, manufactured homes, RVs, travel trailers, shipping containers, other defabricated metal boxes and buildings. Um, a little bit about home-based businesses. We don't, we're really not trying to do this to encourage people to run businesses out of these accessory dwellings, dwellings, but perhaps a home office would be okay. Um, and things about addresses and. And things about addresses and how they're assigned as well as making sure that we are kosher with any restrictive covenants. So I'm glad to kind of go through these in more depth if you want, one by one. But I at least wanted to tee this off and see if you had any initial input or questions about anything and what your thoughts are about it.
Okay, so. I have a couple of questions. So under the standard six maximum height, again, I, I know I'm probably playing semantics, but the defining what two stories is, we don't need to define what two stories is, correct? Everybody knows what two stories means.
We typically rely on the vernacular use of that word, but we can go back and double check and see if there's the need to put a definition in it maybe on that, but.
Just throwing it out there. All right.
I'll make a note on that one.
Thank you. So then you have right after that, number seven, placement of detached structures. Any accessory dwelling unit established as a detached accessory structure must be located to the rear of the principal residence. The accessory dwelling unit shall be set back at least 10 feet from the principal residence. Again, I'm not, I understand that other things have already been built. I can, I can think to both number six and number seven, a house that has a accessory dwelling to the left of it that is higher than the house that it was built. That's in the city of Malden. So my question would be. I understand where we're coming with number six. I believe the intent with number six is if you already have a two-story building, we don't want it to be taller than that two-story building. But if it's a one-story building, do we care if it's a two-story building? I don't know.
They can't because it's, the maximum height is set at either a maximum of two stories or the height of their principal residence, whichever is less.
Correct. So in this case that I'm thinking of, of a, of a single-story home with a garage with a, a, a living space above it, it would technically violate what's currently here. And so, and plus it is to the left of the, the home. So that, I guess the question is, is do we, are those that important to us? I'm just kind of throwing it out there as, as a whole, just making comment. And then with, with section 13 on parking, can you explain that one? Is it basically saying if you're, if you're adding a, a dwelling that you need to expand your driveway? Like what exactly does that entail?
So there's two different ways that you can, you can approach this and how you can provide parking for an accessory dwelling. One is to accommodate on it on your driveway. There are some properties who have plenty large and plenty long enough driveways to be able to accommodate the parking for an accessory dwelling. There are some that don't though. And so the intent of here is that you need to create an area for them to park if there's not room on your driveway. What this is saying is what we don't want you to do is just put a parking space smack in front of your house. The intent of that is to kind of create that maybe off to the side or even in the rear if possible. That's what that's saying.
Perfect. Well, total side note, I'm getting distracted, I know. But I was happening to drive down to Conway this weekend and there's that little stretch that everybody has to travel where it's like all fields and they've now built houses there. What I found was interesting, again, just side note, is that they're building two houses that share a driveway. It was very interesting. I never seen anything like that, but it's one long driveway and then it splinters off into two parking areas for each house. Anyways, I digress. For number 16, when it talks about building entryways, making sure that that doesn't contradict with item number seven, where it talks about where the placement of the detached structure is. My, my assumption is, is that you're basically saying you want, you want everything to come in, obviously it has to come in from somewhere. So you're just stating it comes from the side and not the actual rear of the property?
What this is saying is that if you're putting in a new doorway for that accessory dwelling, what we, where we don't want it is in the front facing the street. Because we're still want to maintain that appearance that it's a single-family house. And so what this is saying that those new doorways into the accessory dwelling either has to be on the side of that house or on the backside of the house. And this is for, supposed to say in here that this is really for where there's an attached, where it's done as an attached rest dwelling and maybe that's not got missed in here.
Okay.
But that's, that might be the missing piece that you're asking about.
Perfect, okay. And then my last one is on item 19, the prohibited forms. You had mentioned that in your opening statement of no mobile homes, manufactured homes, travel trailers, shipping containers, refrabricated metal boxes. So I guess my question there is, is there a, is there a, a safety concern of redoing those? Or is it an aesthetics concern? And the reason why I ask is because we have elsewhere in this ordinance that it has to meet the aesthetics codes of the house. So would we have a, an issue if it was, let's say, a shipping container that was re-conditioned, but yet matched the, the aesthetics of the neighborhood in the home?
Yeah, it was initially put in here as for aesthetic purposes and, and making sure that, you know, if someone puts some metal prefab in the backyard, that it doesn't detract from how the rest of the neighborhood looks. But I'm understanding your question as well. If someone wanted to use a shipping container, but then put some treatments or facade on top of that to make it look like the house, could that be done? Good idea, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I understand from an aesthetic standpoint. And of course, most of the neighborhoods there, they're, if they have a covenants, they would, would not allow that to begin with. But for neighborhoods that don't have it, if it's not a concern of, of safety or the way that those things are manufactured, if it matches the aesthetics, then I personally would have an issue. Of course, that's for council. So.
It's a good point.
Just a, just a thought.
Appreciate that one.
And that is all I have, Chairman.
Mr. Deerhog, I just want to say thank you. Mr. Allgood took care of most of my concerns and questions, but I just want to thank you for addressing this because I know that we've gotten a number of requests from people in larger lot areas with that R20 or R15. And it, it made no sense to me why we were allowing ADUs in those smaller lot areas and not on the larger lot areas. So I, I, I think that this takes, you know, a lot of times government has a solution searching for a problem, but I think that we actually have a solution for a problem this time. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
The only, the only other one I noticed is it, it appears that 18 is redundant when you have 10 in there. You, you have it about, you know, they have to use the same sewer, same electric, same everything there. And the comments, the intent is to guard against them being separately owned. But in number 10, we clearly, we clearly state accessory dwelling unit shall not be sold apart, subdivided, or otherwise segregated ownership from principal residence. So it seems to me that's a redundant and unnecessary restriction there. Potentially because if I built an ADU and my kid was living in it, I want him paying his own power bill. Want him freeloaden off my power.
I understand.
Can't wait to get him off my insurance.
Oh, you know. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right.
All right.
You got what you need there? We don't need a motion, that's.
No, no action necessary in this one. We'll, we'll make a few edits here and, and queue it up for the planning commission and it'll come back to you again.
All right. Our last one is discussion of overlay districts and central redevelopment districts.
Thank you. And we also, we, well, we brought this up several times. We brought this up earlier this year and really want to work on this. And kind of struggling getting started. And I think what I really need is to know, what do you want as the primary purpose or the primary objective for either the, an overlay district or an expansion of the CRD? And probably one of the main reasons I asked this is, is even just looking at the example of our current CRD and where it's at. I'm not, I don't know if I actually know what the, its primary objective is supposed to be. We have a few different things in there, a few different objectives that are included in that district. It talked about fostering urban form, promoting mixed-use development, encouraging pedestrian design. Not sure how well we're doing with that and what we've kind of see come to the CRD. And, and maybe I'll kind of let you judge if you think that's, the CRD has been successful to date. Kind of what my observation with the CRD has been is that most of all, the redevelopment we've had in the CRD is just taking and using the existing building and maybe doing a few renovations on it and putting something new in it. And I don't know if that's kind of what our intent has been with that. But with the Family Dollar building, now the Bohemian Bowl, all occasion celebrations, now Tropical Grill, BB&amp;T, which is now Malden Station Vet and Summer Moon, and Healy Brown, which is going to be Pickle Yard, all of those are, are existing buildings that were there. The only new construction we've had in the city center area has been the townhomes. So as I work on this, I really kind of wanted to get some feedback or input as what do you see that the need should be to be the primary focus of either an overlay district or expanding the CRD or updating the CRD to continue to build our vision for city center area?
Mr. Mattney.
All right. Couple of things. Number one, I think that the CRD needs to be expanded and doesn't need to end there at, at Jenkins. I think that we can, I think that we can expand it. And I think that we can work to have some of the economic development benefits that are attached to that geographic area also extended. I, I think that we haven't done as good a job as we could be doing in terms of enforcing what the CRD is and is supposed to be. You know, we're trying to create a city center walkable, shoppable, dinable, mixed, truly mixed-use area within the city that would complement other developments in the city limits, especially as DOT gets ready for the Build a Better Butler project and extend the trail into downtown and then down East Butler. But all of that said, I, I think that the, the larger issue that we have to take a look at is zoning, period. You know, we've, we've said it time and time again, the zoning from 1975 does not necessarily meet 2025's needs. And I, I think we're still waiting on the comp plan. See what that looks like. I mean, I almost at this point, and I've kind of hinted at it from time to time, but I'm almost of the opinion that we go ahead and put a moratorium on rezoning until we can decide what the zoning actually looks like for the city. And what are the, you know, what, what nodes fit with what types of development? How do we want to be strategic and intentional in our growth and development? And I think that we're, we're flying by the seat of our pants with, with some of these things. And that we just need to press pause until we get tho, those things locked in. You know, when you look at what our neighbor to the north did, you know, there's essentially a zoning classification for every piece of property within their municipal boundaries. I don't know that we necessarily need to go to that micro level, but certainly in terms of determining what we want growth and development to look like within Malden. You know, do we divide it into quadrants? You know, how, how, how do we, how do we parcel it? I, I just think that we need to be more thoughtful about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Mr. Allgood.
Our neighbor to the north, is that Greer or Spurmer? Greenville? I, I can, I guess they're kind of north. Yeah, I guess so. I guess so. I was, I was thinking a little bit, you know, north, northwest, northeast, north, northwest, anyways.
Got it.
Same, thank you. All right. Yeah, I, I would just, for the most part, just say ditto. The, you use the word quadrants, which I think are something that we could look at. I think that one of the things, I know we've talked about, for example, we've got four principal neighborhoods in the, that were part of the city of Malden. Of course, now it's expanded way beyond that. But when you think about that, and I know it's kind of weird to think about it from the standpoint of Malden because we are not as old of a city as others, but to start thinking about our history and start thinking about some ideas of preservation and all those examples that you gave of what's happened in our central business district where pieces of property are being repurposed. I love that, the fact that we are able to repurpose these buildings into something new and different, rather than always just wiping the slate clean. So anything that we do in terms of, of zoning that encourages that sort of thing, helps develop these neighborhoods into, into, use the word quadrant, it's probably, it's probably another term I'm trying to come up with, but I think it, it makes total sense because now you think about some of these other communities. Let's at least go back to our neighbor to the north. Okay, you have your Hampton Pickney area, right? And you've got these different, or the North Main area. And, and you kind of develop these communities, these sense of place within the city. And to be able to do that here, I think would be, would get cool. I think it'd be awesome if it's something that we could continue to expand upon. And whether that is the, the central, expanding the, the central redevelopment district. Yes, I think that is something that we should look at. I believe it was Councilman Crayling who spoke up at the last committee meeting, mentioned that. I think that makes, makes some sense. To looking at the overall zoning classifications, updating those, I think all those things are, are great ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. I don't, I don't, I don't think I have a lot to add to that. I think, I think the, the wisdom is in, again, not trying to piecemeal parts of this together, but finally coming up with, get to our comprehensive plan and then have an idea of what we're trying to do here. And then I think that informs everything else and that gives us the ability, you know, whether we extend it down or not, that's, you know, that's probably easy. And potentially necessary, but yeah, I think, I think the bigger issue is to go and get that plan done so that then we can, then we have something we're working towards as a whole. And then that'll inform the rest of this. And I understand why you're confused and I appreciate the fact that you've been operating pretty darn effectively throughout that confusion. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mattney, if I could ask to, to clear, clarify, so I mean, if we go back to the, the idea of, of what the true need is, the true need is not necessarily looking at the CRD or at overlay districts. The, the central thing here is let's focus on the zoning first. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Allgood.
Make sure it's on the record that, that Mr. Mattney used the M-word, not me. Moratorium. I agree with that too.
I'll, I'll, I'll own that.
They think maybe, no, sir. All right, thank you, sir. All right, we're on to our second public comment. Seeing none, committee concerns, none. What do we hear in German?
So moved.
Have a motion. From one of y'all at the same time.
Second?
Motion of the second. No discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those like sign hearing, none, we are adjourned at 7:42. Those like sign hearing, none, we are adjourned at seven forty-two. I don't think it was on purpose.
Excellent.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you bow your heads with me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of this week and this month. And as we start a new month, we just ask that you be with us and guide us, both in our personal and professional lives. We thank you for this time together to serve our citizens. I ask that you give us grace and wisdom as we do the city's business. And just pray for our firefighters, police officers, frontline, public works, and everyone who's involved with this city, that you'll help us to lead and guide them appropriately. In your holy name, I pray, amen.
Pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of the new republic which stands by nation, by God, indivisible, the routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I just noticed I forgot to turn my mic on. I know Cindy probably heard me, do we have anybody online that might not have heard? Okay, since, let me just restate the part that I would have missed. This, of course, special call, City Council meeting Monday, October 6th, 2025. Let the reflect all members of council, our president and their seats, appreciate that along with our staff. That catches back up, I apologize for not seeing the red light on my little box and I didn't turn my speaker on. Apologize for that. Before us is new business and to consider an executive session for a couple of item judicial appointments. Would like to do the executives, Ms. King's got it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for both executive sessions if I could. So at this time, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session to consider a personnel matter regarding judicial appointments as allowed by state statute thirty dash four dash seventy A one and into executive session to consider negotiations incident to proposed purchase and sale of property regarding city center as allowed by state statute thirty dash four seventy A two.
Thank you, Ms. King, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Back for Mr. Mattany, any discussion? Here none, all of us in favor of the motion in executive session for items A and B as stated by Ms. King, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous, we will adjourn upstairs.